...or property on it that could actually be developed for commercial along the whole river. It's been there for how many years?
We didn't have one person in opposition.
It's zoned residential.
My Fitbit says it's nine o'clock.
I missed two.
You better leave put your official in there.
Mine says nine o'clock.
Again, that's the official clock there. Call the meeting to order and we'll open with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, we've got an audience for the first time in a few meetings now, and it's good to see some people out in the audience again, but welcome. This is our first also live broadcast of a Benton County Board meeting. We've gone through some technical glitches and tried some dry runs with the system that we have, the YouTube system, and we hope we got them all out now so that everyone can get a chance to watch us in action.
Are you on TV? You're recording?
No, no, just on YouTube, sir. Just YouTube.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, well, same thing. Same thing, yeah. So, but at this time then, would the court please read the roll?
Mr. Pop?
Here.
Mr. Bobberty?
Here.
Mr. Burkle?
Here.
Mr. Peschel?
Here.
Mr. Crane?
Here.
The next item we have is to approve or amend the agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions?
No, sorry, no changes.
Most to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Most and second approve the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. Next item we have is open forum, and this is for the purpose of the open forum section. It was to allow public input and information to be presented to the board that does not require action. And there are some policies we've set up, you know, there'd be no personal attacks. Campaign-type presentations are not allowed. And any input will be addressed to the board of commissioners and not to anyone else in the audience. If you have a handout, you have to have copies for everyone. And so, I see we have one person, Scott DeMars. Would you like to, at 13042 65th Street Northeast, would you like to come up into the podium and state your name and address the issue that you have on here?
All right. Hi, I'm Scott DeMars.
Good morning.
I live at 13042 65th Street Northeast, Foley, Minnesota. Excuse me. I live right in front of the driving range. I was told by the city council, because I went to the city council meeting last week, I'm getting bombarded by golf balls. I'm refinancing my farm right now because of the interest rates and everything. And to get the loan and everything, they told me my barn is falling over, so I had to take the rest of the barn down. So I'm tearing the barn down, and while it was up, it made a great block for golf balls. I've been in contact with every owner of the golf course about this issue, but nobody wants to do anything about it. And now they're bouncing off my house, they're coming up in my driveway. I can't even park in my driveway. I have to park out in my yard far enough away so I don't get damage. And I'm just wondering, I want to really see them put up nets, but nobody wants to do anything about it. They told me at the city council meeting that I had to come to this meeting and tell you guys what was going on. So I just thought I'd come here and voice, let you know what was going on and see what you guys thought, so.
Can I, I'm John Bradshaw, I'm a lawyer.
Well, could you, would you come, would you come up here, John, please? And...
I've known Scott for 40 years. He's a friend. This is not going through my law firm in Wake Park. This is a personal thing, although I am, I think that I can better explain the issue to you. They have a driving range on this place that's aimed at his place. The barn was a barricade, and for years he let it go by. He didn't want to get in a fight with his neighbors. But now the barn's down. A deputy came out to look at this, and a golf ball rolled by him while he was out there. The situation is equivalent to the golf course had a handgun range, and they fired the handgun without an adequate backstop. It's exactly the same theory, same issue. It's just that the golf balls are bigger and slower. Otherwise, it's just like firing bullets at his house. Some of the golf balls have reached the highway behind it, if you get a guy with a good swing. They don't want to do anything. I was at the Mall of America years ago, and I don't know what it's like now, but they had a driving range down there, and they had nets and seemed to catch everybody's balls okay. Our position is that you could put 20 or 30 feet of nets there and go up, you know, 10, 20 feet in the air with several poles, and that would solve the problem. It doesn't, the higher you go, the less, the less damage it can happen because the golf balls go at that maximum distance, at about that level. If you go up in the air like this, they don't go anywhere. Now, I think that we're caught here between the lawyers. I believe that your counsel said we should go to the city, and it's a private matter. And we went to the city, and they said, oh, you want to go back to the county? This is a private matter. It is not. It's a matter of public safety, and the cops need to be involved in this. And the sheriff's office is very supportive, but he needs direction. And this guy needs to be stopped from doing this or put up this barricade, which wouldn't cost very much. He went to some place and got some fancy estimate for some permanent deal, which is not what he needs. All he needs is something like to head down to Mall of America, and he won't do it. I also need to tell the counsel that there's been some kind of a rumpus over at the golf course, a domestic rumpus of some kind, and right now the place is deserted, so who knows? But what we're looking for is help now. The golf course, I don't know why, is in the city limits, and Scott is in the county, okay? So the golf balls are being fired from one jurisdiction into another jurisdiction. And you could argue that the harm is in your jurisdiction, but what sets it going, of course, is in the other jurisdiction. Whatever it is, it's a matter of public safety. And again, I urge you to think about the gun situation. If somebody went over there and fired a gun, and the bullet went and hit somebody on Scott's thing, there wouldn't be any police, you know, hesitation at all, okay, to stop that. And I think, didn't the county tell, where'd Scott go?
Right here.
Didn't the county tell the guy to stop doing it?
Yeah. Sure, I've got a sheriff that's been working on the case.
I go say the county sheriff told Scott to stop it, he didn't pay any attention. His woman went kind of berserk, and I understand that she's at the bottom of some kind of a domestic rumpus.
Well, I think we're getting, you know...
Not our problem, but we are trying to get the golf balls stopped. I mean, he has a crew that's tearing...
Yeah, John, I think we get, I think we do get the, we do get the idea here, so...
Okay.
Yeah, we do have a five-minute limit here, and we're not gonna...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're not going to take any action on it today, as I stated it in the beginning.
Yes, I understand. I didn't know that before, but I understand that.
Okay, but we'll take another advisement, and I may want to talk to the commissioner from that district.
Simple cease and desist, you know, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Put the guy in jail.
All right, and I think that's the only one we had signed up under open forum.
Are you going to discuss this, in which case we'll...
Oh, I don't know if we'll, if we'll get done today or not. There's no action going to be taken on it, so...
We can, we can take off?
Yeah, right, yep, yep, yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item we have is the consent agenda, and that's to approve or amend the regular meeting minutes of July 7, 2020. And item two is authorize the board chair to sign a letter to the state auditor indicating Benton County's intent to use a private CPA firm for the 2021 and 2022 financial statement audits. Any members want either one of these items pulled for discussion?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
And we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. Consent agenda is adopted. Next item we have, under rocks, under the Department of Development, is a public hearing to consider ordinance number 478 to rezone Lot 11, Block 1, The Cove. 3.88 acres in Watap Township from B1 Business District to R3 Single Family Residence. And before opening the public hearing, we will first hear a county staff report. Roxanne, you've got some background for us?
I do. I'm just trying to get this to open up here. Okay. I think most of you are familiar with The Cove area and that development. And since then, a portion of The Cove has been bought by Phase 2 LLC, which is Nate Landware. The area that he has purchased is in light blue and then the purple here. Those areas are zoned R3 MUD, so MUD is a multi-unit development. It just means that it's, number one, it's in the shoreline; number two, it's a higher density than we would generally allow, and it allows you to configure that area a little bit differently than our regulations allow for. And then within that area, you have the B1, which is our Pirate's Cove. Now, that area has been used for commercial uses since, I believe, 1941 was the date that I was able to research for some sort of a restaurant or supper club. And then it was used as that all the way up until 1998, when the fire took out the Pirate's Cove. At that time, I think they entertained ideas to bring back restaurants of some sort to that area, and there hasn't, there hasn't been an ability to move forward with that sort of commercial development. Jim Brownson with The Cove had purchased the area, planning to make this a nice development, adding to it the restaurant. And again, for the last 22 years, there has not been a development that has been able to progress enough to be developed in that area. So with Phase 2 purchasing the property, they have looked at all options, and the one that made the most sense was to rezone this to an R3, which is consistent with the surrounding zoned property, and develop it into two residential lots. So the request for this rezoning is to go from a commercial B1 lot to an R3 residential zoning district.
Okay. If the applicant, any, any questions for me, as long as you got your hair? I think everyone's familiar with it, that property. I was on the fire call when it burned, as a fireman, so I remember very well. If the applicant or the representatives in attendance, please give your name and address. Tell us what you are seeking. Is there anyone from them?
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Nathan Landware. I live at 6625 55th Street Northeast, Sock Rapids. And we're applying to rezone this property from commercial to residential.
Okay, very good. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address this issue?
Mr. Chair, we may have some folks available here via the go-to meeting, so we may want to ask that.
Okay, is there anyone out there on the phone? Anyone that wishes to address this issue? I always forget about that, yeah. Okay, one, one last call for any public comment on this issue. Final call. Okay, that, that will, hearing none, I said the public hearing is now closed. Are there any emails, letters, or other communications to be read into the record?
I did receive a call from Brad McIntosh. He had concerns about the rezoning in the sense that once it's rezoned from commercial to residential, the likelihood of this ever being rezoned back to resident, or excuse me, commercial is slim to none. And that was, that was his concern. I know he had reached out to Jim Brownson. He had reached out, I believe, to the township and to, I think, to Nate as well. So that was the one, that was the one and only comment that I received.
Okay. Okay, have you, have you received any comments from any state agencies, cities, or townships?
Watap Township did discuss this matter. They were split on how they felt about the decision. They were individually going to email me their responses. I did not receive a response from any of the township officials.
Okay, is there, there's no official action required by township?
No.
Was there? Okay. Okay. The county board will have time for questions of the staff and discussion. And as a reminder to the audience, the public hearing is now closed. So are there any questions or comments from the board members?
We just, Mr. Chair, we just, the plan commissioner reviewed it, and all nine was unanimous. You know, and it, it made a lot of sense to do it, you know. 22 years, we gave somebody to, you know, do something, and they didn't do it, so whatever, you know.
Yeah, yeah, it would be nice, yeah. I understand, yeah, it would be nice to have it back to that, but...
Well, I too had a call from Mr. McIntosh, and I had one other call, and I kind of felt after the conversation that it was, he had talked to Mr. McIntosh, so he decided to call me. But, you know, I agree, 22 years is a long time, and nothing has happened, and we might as well move forward.
Mr. Chair, I guess I concur. There's, you know, there's big demand for housing lots now and not big demand for commercial lots, so I guess we have to live in the present and move on.
Mr. Chair, I'd have to agree. It's all residential all the way around the whole property anyway, so...
Make some more residential lots.
Okay, and I guess any, so like, it's up to us to take some action on this, so...
I move we approve the rezoning from...
From B1?
From B1 to single-family residence.
R3.
Yeah. B1 to R3.
We're motioning a second. To approve rezoning from B1 to R3 for this property. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Now, we have, the next item we have is also a public hearing to consider the minor final plat entitled "The Cove", submitted by Phase 2 LLC, Nate Landware. And again, before opening the public hearing, we will first hear a county staff report, and Roxanne?
Okay, so with Phase 2 development, they are adjusting this area. There's a certain number of lots, so it will be the commercial lot, and then the lot to the south, this, what will soon be called Lot 1, are, have been removed from The Cove development as we know it. So they will no longer be subject to the covenants and other restrictions that would be in place. They would not be part of the homeowners association. They would be just your average residential lot, installing septic. Their own wells would not be subject to any of those other restrictions and covenants in place for The Cove. The lots to the north would remain within The Cove development as villas. However, to make this work, they've had to replat the property. So what was 10, proposed 10 lots with The Cove development will now be one individual lot that's six acres. The commercial lot will be two lots, each being 1.63 acres. And then the villas, they've combined four of the lots to the north to create two larger lots, and they will remain, will still hold that common lot area, which is Lot 4 and access to the river. So we are reducing the overall lots within this area, actually by 12 units, to create larger lots. And this has been sort of a reoccurring theme with the Cove development in that the smaller lots just aren't selling the way that they had hoped in 2008. And so they're, they're going forward with combining and making larger lots to make this work, get homes built in there.
Okay. You know, the applicants want to step forward and give your name and address again and tell us what, what you think of this?
Nathan Landware, 6625 55th Street Northeast, Sock Rapids, Minnesota. In doing this project, we looked at making the lots a little bit bigger because we're having a hard time getting interest in the smaller lots. So we'd like to rezone these lots to residential lots, being a little bit bigger in square footage.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else out there that wants to make any comments?
I just, Mr. Chair, I've got a question about the, will these lots have access to the river then or not? Or is it, what's that common area? How's that work?
All, the lots to the north, the lots six and five, do have access to the river through the shared Cove Association ground, so they would remain in the Cove Association.
Okay.
Okay, final call. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the county board on this? Either on the phone or out here? If not, the public hearing's now closed. Are there any emails, letters, or any communications to be read into the record?
No.
Okay. The department received any comments, concerns from state agencies, cities, or townships?
The township did act on this, and they have provided preliminary approval of the preliminary plat.
Okay. And that official action was required, and that was their action?
Yes.
Okay, very well. Okay, the county board will have time for questions of the staff and discussion. Members of the board have any questions?
Just, just, Mr. Chair, then, with the same as with the other one, there was nobody there in opposition for this, and it made a lot of sense to make bigger lots on these. We need the tax base in Benton County, so...
Okay.
Right.
All right. Any more discussion by anyone? If not, we could probably take some action on this one also.
Most to approve, Mr. Chair.
Okay, the motions are approved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. So we have one more. It's not a, yeah, this is not a, yeah, this is not a public hearing part. This is just to prove, the next item we have is to approve, modify, request to amend the development agreement for the plat. You want to give us a little background on that, then?
Yes, so with this, when The Cove was created, there's a development agreement in place that outlines everything about The Cove, including the lots, streets, right down to the number of boat slips that they have. And in that particular statement, that's what we're amending, just to make sure that everything's wrapped up in a nice, nice neat bow. There would have been 30, I believe, 30 boat slips allowed with the, with the commercial restaurant, and then another 18 boat slips for the south lot. So we're just removing that those were allowed. There would be eight slips allowed for the remaining development, and then we're removing some of the common space that would have been designated within that development. Jim Brownson is still the person who needs to sign off on this development agreement. He has since signed that. If I receive that in the mail today, before you guys leave, I'll bring it to Monte or Vicky for signature. Otherwise, don't send the one in the packets, not for, not for signature. But Michelle has reviewed that and is okay with the development agreement as it's written.
Okay. Does that answer your question a little bit, Jake, on the...
Uh huh, yeah, yep, yep.
All right. Any questions for me, one? If not, we need a motion to approve.
I move we approve the modification of the development agreement for the plat of The Cove and a Cove addition, third addition.
I'll second that.
We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Thank you.
I think we got, we got The Cove taken care of, yeah. Okay. Yeah, no, so the lots, yeah.
Building.
Once these building permits come through, yeah. Okay, next up, we have Nadine Inman, Art of Treasures, who's going to go over some of the CARES Act funding for elections and answer any questions we might have.
Yeah, so we didn't have the time to put this in your packet. We apologize for that. Just some additional information about the CARES election grant and what we're working on in the department in regards to COVID.
All right, so, good morning.
Good morning, Nadine.
So, um... This is an opportunity here for us to talk a little bit about the election CARES Act grant that you're probably aware of. We have that available to us from the state. The state gives us some very descriptive guidelines as far as what we can use that grant money for and what we cannot use it for. So the monies that they're offering are strictly for, you know, COVID and providing the juris... and providing the jurisdictions with additional PPE supplies, additional staffing they may need for the elections, for protecting the staff and the voters during the primary and the general. So on the second page of your handout that I gave you, it depicts what the state gave us for guidelines as far as the breakdown that each jurisdiction would receive if they elect to receive the extra funding. So the state has their guidelines. They looked at, in determining who would get what funding for the grant monies, the state, of course, is looking at the number of registered voters, the size of the precinct. All of those types of things would go into their calculation in them determining who would get what. So this is the default allocation that was provided to us by the state. This is the allocation that we would like to follow. So at this point, the next step for us would be to reach out to every jurisdiction, provide them with this information, along with a list of what they can use those funds for, and allow them to tell us whether they absolutely have the choice of whether or not they want to utilize these funds. The one caveat with this is, of course, there is a 20% match. So at the top, you can see that Benton County would, if they want to utilize the option of getting the grant, we would get just over $12,000 of additional grant money to use toward PPE supplies and things related to COVID for the elections. The county will have to match that at 20%. The same for all the jurisdictions, so that highlights what each jurisdiction's match would have to be if they would like to allocate that grant funding. We would, we're going to proceed forward in providing this information to the jurisdictions and ask them what they would like to do and whether or not they would like the funding. You have any questions on that part of the grant?
I'm just kind of reading through your narrative here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just give us a minute, we can kind of skim through it here.
Yep, certainly.
I guess, one question I had was, on the, how much documentation do you need? If you get, when you get the allocation and we provide the match, how much documentation do you need to make sure you don't send any of the money back, or do you get it with no questions asked?
No. Yep, so, um, yep. So the instructions that we have been provided are if the jurisdictions elect to get their grant funding, they will need to keep receipts and documentation to, for the allocated funds. So they will need to keep very good books and provide that back to the state in order to account for all the funding. So just like we would do here, we would have to provide all the receipts and submit them all to the state, similar to what the jurisdictions did with the PNP. So if you recall, the PNP reimbursement that we received, we had all of the jurisdictions submit a form along with all of their receipts. We reviewed those and then processed those and sent them to the state in one big packet. So it'll be the similar process for them. They will need to keep track of the expenses that are COVID-related, so. And then I didn't mention, I'm sorry, I didn't mention this, but, and maybe you're already well aware that the state is supplying a list of PPE supplies for all the jurisdictions for the primary and general. We have received some of those supplies in. There are two types of masks that each precinct will, jurisdiction will get. They are supplying the KN95 mask for the judges, and then some other masks for the voters. They are supplying each jurisdiction with hand sanitizer and a self-serve hand sanitizer setup station. They're also supplying a spray that, a disinfectant spray that each area will have. So we're getting quite a few supplies from the state. We don't have them all, but then we will, they are providing enough for them for both elections. There's going to be a few holes that need to be filled in, and that's what we're hoping to use, the grant money that we receive. Some additional signage we'll be needing, maybe some taping or marking for the social distancing. So we've been thinking of other things on our end that we would like to supply. The rubber gloves won't be supplied by the state. We'd like to be able to supply that to the jurisdictions. So we're kind of working on a list of what we think would be needed, and we would like to provide a box of PPE supplies to all the jurisdictions for both the primary and the general election, so that they're fully equipped.
Well, I did get a question.
Okay, go ahead.
So, do you need the $12,000, and if you don't use it all, do you send rest back?
Yep, so.
Can you apply for less than the whole thing, or?
Yeah, we, they're gonna supply us with the $12,000. Whatever we don't utilize, we will have to send back by the very end of the year. Yep. And I suspect that we would, we, we'll need the additional grant money, Commissioner Bowerly, to fill these slots in that aren't, the supplies that aren't being covered by the state or not being provided by the state. There's a, we kind of have a whole list of things that we feel like we need to supply to those jurisdictions, so they're protected during the election and as well as the public.
And with the, with the more mail-in ballots now, will it cost you more to count all them?
Yeah, unfortunately, that was, that is the one item that we cannot utilize those grant monies for. No, mail balloting is a part of our normal process with every election, so that is a definite no from the state. So that's the one thing we can't utilize it for.
I had a question. Have the townships been notified about this available?
Not, 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 you've heard, huh?
Well, a couple of them have, are going to use their COVID money that have discussed to buy masks and stuff like that already. They've discussed it at their last, you know, this month's meetings, because they, you know.
Yeah.
I think, like, Wattev got 80,000, Lingola got 30,000, you know. And they're finding very hard ways to spend that, so they were looking at that, so maybe, you know, the sooner the better.
Yes.
Before they go and start buying stuff.
Heather, do you know, did, did we notify them when we, that we were getting supplies? I thought we, we had communicated that to the jurisdictions that we were getting supplies from the state.
Yeah, so I thought we had kind of communicated that already, that there were supplies coming from the state. So we have, part of it has come in and the part of it has not, so it's sitting in my office waiting to be divvied up, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Nadine, how prepared are we for our August primary?
We're very prepared.
Really?
Oh, really, we are, the staff is just great. We have been working very hard on making sure that we're going to be ready to go and safe, and keeping staff safe, and of course, the public as well. We have our PAT testing next week.
Yes.
Next week. So with our public accuracy testing, we are limiting that to four to six judges at the most at a time, so we're going to end up having more sessions. But that'll give us a lot more one-on-one with our head election judges, and we'll do the PAT testing first. And after we're done with that, we are going to go through some COVID-related items with them, show them the supplies that we have, and talk to them about the setup of their precinct for elections. So on this end, we're going to do everything we can to help them be fully prepared so that they're feeling confident to, once the elections come around, so.
Mr. Chair.
Warren had a comment.
Nadine, how does that curbside voting work?
How does the curbside voting work? Well, I'm going to let Heather explain that to you. Heather, so there is a, yeah, so that's definitely an option, too, that the state has gave the jurisdictions.
Yep, so with the curbside voting commissioners, if someone doesn't want to enter the polling place, they'll have someone, usually it's an elderly person that does the curbside voting right now, but it could be anyone. They would go in and let the election judges know that they want to vote curbside. And then two election judges from different parties would come out with a form for the voter to fill out. They would take that form back into the polling place and bring out the voter's ballot. And then those judges would go and insert the ballot into the tabulator for the voter. So the voter would be able to vote from their vehicle.
So they would be a witness, too, really?
The, it's still a secret ballot.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. They get a secrecy cover for their ballot. When they're inserting it into the machine, they're not supposed to look at who the person voted for.
Yeah, so voter turnout for primaries is pretty low anyway. It'd probably be like 50 people or something, probably, yeah.
Typically 50 to 60% of the registered voters, so we have 23,000 registered voters. We've already gotten about 2,000 absentee ballots.
Well, that would bring up the next question. When, between the mail-in and the absentee ballots, how is, are you going to have enough staff to count all these? Or, you know, I think you maybe need to look to some of the mail-in, the ones that do ballot by mail for help.
So for the general election, we're looking at possibly bringing in some temporary staff to help out with that. For the primary, because it's lower turnout, we didn't want to spend the money now, because we can manage with our staff in our office. The state law allows us to open them seven days sooner this time, so we can start opening and processing 14 days prior. We are also required to be here the Saturday before the election for absentee voting, and we plan on spending that day since it's a little voter turnout day, processing ballots. So we have a plan in place for that, too.
Anything else, Nadine, want to sign that?
No, I, so, yeah, do you have any, any other questions for, for us? So I will reach out to the jurisdictions regarding this. Today, we wanted to wait until after we spoke with you, and we will reach out to them, let them know what their possible grant amount is and what the match would be. And they can determine for themselves whether they want to, they want to utilize that funding or not. So, and then I'll come back before you gentlemen, after we've gotten the results and let you know what the findings are.
Okay.
Does that sound okay?
Yep, sounds good, very well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Nadine.
Yep.
Next up, we have Bob Cornelius, Human Services Director. Approval of lead eligibility specialist and repurpose of 20-hour support enforcement aid position.
Good morning.
Morning, Bob.
For our committee, the whole meeting last week, we spoke about initiating a phone bank pilot program to better provide customer service. So at that point in time, we had an opportunity to demonstrate that it would be budget neutral, so I would ask for your approval on that pilot program.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes of both additions, so.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, to move one eligibility special position to lead eligibility position, and move a 20-hour position from income maintenance unit to child support. That's the motion, right, and a second?
Yep.
Okay, is there any further discussion? If none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, you'll be, yeah, you're going to stay right here, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. At this time, I'm going to recess the regular board meeting to conduct the Human Services Board meeting and turn the meeting over to Commissioner Paschel.
Okay. 9:39, we'll call, call the Human Services Board to order. Approve or amend the agenda, Mr. Chair, Bob.
I have no changes.
Motion to.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Not, all signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Incentive agenda to approve and amend the regular minutes of July 7th to 20th, to approve the, number two, to approve the 2020 contract renewal with Village Family Services for a co-located therapist at Foley Schools on behalf of the Benton County Children's Mental Health Collaborative. And number three, to approve the 2020 contract renewal with Lutheran Social Services, a family advocate at Sauk Rapids Schools. Anyone who wants to discuss any of these three?
I move we approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Bob?
I have nothing else unless any of you have questions for me.
Anybody got any question for Bob? If not, we adjourn that. Human Services, turn it back to the chair.
Alrighty, thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay, next up, we have, where'd Chris go? Send Chris in here if he's out there. Is he out there?
He was.
He was just out there.
He wasn't in the break room.
Morning, Chris.
Good morning, Commissioners. It must be my turn.
Yes, it is.
Work just does not stop when you leave the office.
You've got the bridge replacement prioritization update for us.
I do, and I have a little presentation, and so if you just want to bear with me just for a moment. And I got to find the folder that this is in. All right, here we go. Well, we'll just go with this. Everybody can see that, okay, on the screen? It's not the full screen that I wanted. But, okay, well, let's talk about some Benton County bridges. Kind of refresh your memory. We have 112 bridges in our county that we inspect. Eighty-two of those are owned by the county, meaning they, they fall on a county road. Twenty-seven are owned by townships, and three are owned by a city, the city of Foley here. A lot of people don't realize that there are bridges in the city of Foley. Fortunately for us, they're all box culverts. And so all 112 of these, we inspect these periodically. Some of them are annual, some of them are biannual, and some of them are on a four-year basis. And so you may be wondering, well, out of all those, you know, not all of them are on county roads. Why does my office get involved with inspecting them? Well, it comes down to state statute. State statute says that, as the county engineer, I'm responsible for in-service safety inspections of those bridges. We must inspect all county-owned bridges, all township-owned bridges, and all bridges within a municipality where a city engineer is not regularly employed, meaning like the city of Foley. They, they contract for some engineering service with a consultant. But likewise, Sauk Rapids, if they have a, they have a staff regularly-employed engineer, and they inspect the bridge that crosses over into Stearns County, and I don't know if there's any other bridges that they inspect, but that one falls under their jurisdiction for inspection. So, and then, so this is what that looks like. This is a bridge map of all the bridges in Benton County, all 112 of them. And then there you see the ones in Foley that are on city streets. And we even have some of them on our county road four that, that are ours, because they, they fall on the county road, even though it's within the city limits of Foley. And so what is the condition of our bridges? We did another round of inspection last fall, and our condition, well, just like with anything, as things age out, the condition continues to deteriorate. But 88% of our bridges are, are okay. None of them are 100%. But 10% of those, so about 11 of those, are considered structurally deficient, and two of those are functionally obsolete, meaning the design, they were designed in an area that isn't designed for today's traffic. They're not designed for the width of today's vehicles. They're not designed for the, the weight of the vehicles of today. They're not designed for the width of today's vehicles. They're not designed for the, the weight of the vehicles of today. So those are kind of like bridges that we want to focus on, on getting replaced in the coming years. There's about fourteen of those bridges. Which corresponds with a fourteen of them being posted or restricted, meaning that we did an inspection on those, and because they're either have some structurally deficient members, or they've deteriorated, or they were designed years ago, they're not able to carry today's weight. So we have analyzed those and put signs up by the bridges restricting the maximum tons of weight that can travel across those bridges. Ten of them fall on our county roads, two of them are on township roads, and two of them are on township roads that the bridges are actually be closed. One of them is in Maywood. The condition of that was so bad that we decided that to be posted, you couldn't realistically drive any, any vehicle across it. And the fact that a school bus traveled across that regularly caused us concern, so we closed that a little over a year ago on Maywood. Wat, Langola Township has a bridge on a minimum maintenance road that the condition was so bad that they made the decision to go ahead and, and close that with gates and just keep people from driving across it, as opposed to facing the risk of something happening to that bridge even when somebody was on a minimum maintenance road. And so here's a map that kind of shows our posted bridges throughout the county. So they're, they're kind of, kind of spaced out. This bridge, this map even needs to be updated to reflect two new recent bridges that got posted based on our inspection this past fall. These are on Mayhew Lake Township Road here, and this one in, in the city of Foley as well, which we'll talk about in a little bit. So this map is pretty useful for me as the county highway engineer because I'm the one that reviews any overweight permit applications that come into our office. Say, anybody from a contractor to somebody wanting to move a house, or anything where they are gonna gross over eighty thousand pounds, depend, independent of the number of axles they put under their load, they should be getting a permit from us. And this is one of the things I do. I look at their proposed route and see, well, are they gonna drive over any roads that are posted at nine tons year-round? Or are they gonna drive over any bridges that are restricted and can't, can't handle that, that weight? So that's why it's important for those wanting to move those heavy loads to get a permit from us. And that happens. I, they'll suggest a route, and I'll say, nope, that, that bridge is posted. What you're, what you're wanting to haul, I cannot allow that to go over that bridge and suggest a different route. And we usually find a different route. I don't think there's ever been a permit denied, but sometimes it does require finding a different route, and they may have to go, unfortunately, sometimes they may have to go onto a state highway when they didn't have to anticipate, so they have to go get a state permit or something, but, but we usually find a route for them to, to cross that's over bridges that are safe and can handle it. All right, so I mentioned that those fourteen bridges are ones that we need to focus on replacing. You may recall back in February, I brought forward a resolution to prioritize bridges. And, and this is, this table is from that resolution. So the bridges you see listed in black here are the ones that, at that board meeting, we prioritized. And this resolution is shared with state aid in hopes of finding some state bridge bonding, funding, which I see some representatives from Mikey here. Maybe there'll be some news or no news with that. We really need our legislators to pass a bonding bill because that is a significant source of funds for replacing these local bridges. And you see right here, you add those up, that's what we would need from state bridge bonding to replace the bridges in our county. Another way of looking at that, if there is no bonding bill, and we can't get any money from that to replace our bridges, these bridges won't, most likely will not get replaced because it'd be, we would be forced to come up with local funds to replace them. And I'll point out, too, that based on the road number, these aren't on CASA routes. So they're not state aid eligible. We would be looking at local levy dollars or something to replace those bridges. So everybody in the audience, encourage your legislature to pass a bonding bill with a lot of money for bridges in it. But I also want to add, based on some recent inspections, there's this L, this bridge number L nine-two-zero-zero, which is in Watap Township. It is continuing to deteriorate, and I think it's time that we prioritize that. But this is unique. It's on a township road, so it has township bridge funds that are eligible for that. Well, I'll talk about funding options for all bridges. Well, federal funding, that's out there, but there are certain criteria that the bridge and the road would have to meet to be eligible for federal funding. And to be quite honest, federal funding is very competitive. This past year, we did receive a significant amount of federal funding for some road construction projects in our county. I just think with all the criteria and the fact that we did just receive a large sum of federal money, the competitiveness would preclude us from being awarded any federal funds for our local bridges. State aid is always an option for bridges that fall on, on state aid routes. I already mentioned the LBRP, which stands for Local Bridge Replacement Program, which is funded from state, state bonding, or this township bridge account, which, which I'll talk about now. The township bridge account comes directly from gas tax and license fees, motor vehicle sales, and the sales on auto parts. Comes through the Highway User Tax Distribution Fund. There's this five percent sometimes that you, you hear about, argued about at the legislature, this five percent distribution, which goes to township bridges and roads. And so this is twenty-twenty numbers. In twenty-twenty, there was a hundred and twenty-three million, six-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. Sixteen percent of that went to this town bridge account. That accounts for nineteen million, a little over nineteen and a half million dollars. This township bridge account is kind of an allotment, like our regular state aid allotment that we get to maintain and construct our state aid roads. Each county gets an allotment. So right now, we have a balance sitting in our state aid account of township bridge money that, that we could use. And therefore, I think that is a viable option to, to fund some of these township bridges. All right, so, yeah, like I said, that's an allotment directly to the county. So it's sitting in account for us that we, we can apply to a bridge, township bridge project. We do have a healthy unspent balance, and, and we're getting close to where state aid may start looking at that and say, hey, you're not spending your township bridge allotment. That may result in a withholding of future funds. So we want to, we want to spend that if we have that amount. Another benefit of this township bridge account, though, it requires a small amount of match on behalf of the township. State aid rules states that the township would be eligible, would have to contribute to the first ten thousand dollars of engineering towards that bridge. So that would cover like preliminary design and construction engineering of that, and the first ten thousand dollars for construction. So in simple terms, the township would have to contribute about twenty thousand dollars, but they could get a deficient or posted bridge replaced on their system. But it's not automatic. Since it goes through the state aid system, we would need to follow state aid procedures for project and, and plan development. And state aid would like the counties to be the project sponsor. And, and we've, we've done this before when we talk about like federal money for our small cities. We recently approached this subject with the city of Foley, which received some federal money for this, this trail project. So even though it's not federal money, but it kind of along the same lines. They would want the county to be the project sponsor and kind of manage the, the project and the engineering of that. So what is the next step? So we have this new bridge that's, that's been identified as needing to be scheduled for replacement. So we have a, a new resolution that was attached to the agenda item that you received. We should get a commitment from the townships for their local share. I should mention that the resolution that we adopted in February already had a couple township bridges on it. We're adding another township bridge on there, and it had the bridge in, in Foley that, that was on that one map that was, that was posted. So the next step, I, I think, would to receive a commitment from those townships in the city of Foley for their, their local share of that cost. I believe after that, then, we as the county highway office should issue an RFP, a request for proposals for the engineering. So think of it like this. I'm anticipating these, these township bridges and this one in Foley, combining them into one project, issue an RFP, asking consultants to submit proposals to provide the hydraulic analysis and the preliminary engineering, and even the construction engineering, which would include inspection of those bridges. Give us a cost proposal to do that for all those, those bridges. And then award an engineering contract to the successful consultant. But then, then we would manage that out of our office. So, yeah, managing the engineering contract, what would that look like? Well, we would hold the contract with that consultant, that professional services agreement. We would make intermediate payments to that consultant. Oh, that's a, that's a typo, though. We would be reimbursed by the, the township or, or the city up to that first ten thousand dollars per, per structure. So if Maywood Township has a couple bridges, which they do, they would need to contribute up to ten thousand if the engineering costs exceeded that. Watap Township the same way, the city of Foley. What's good about the township bridge funds, that some of that, the engineering costs above ten thousand dollars could be covered by those township bridge funds as well. So we would either be getting reimbursed by the township, or when we receive payment or submit our payment request from state aid, any of those engineering costs that exceed ten thousand dollars, we would hold on to cover what we've paid out to the consultant or any costs that we've had. So here's that, that resolution. Like I mentioned, we already had, the city of Foley Bridge was already in the resolution that was adopted in February. That's this L two-four-one-zero. Nine-five-six-one-six and nine-five-six-one-seven are two Mayhew Lake Township Bridges. And then this L nine-two-zero-zero, Sucker Creek Road, that's a Watap Town, Watap Town Bridge. That's the one that I'm proposing that we add to the resolution. The rest of the resolution is the same as you saw in February. But this is the kind of that first step to apply for, whether it's state bridge bond funds, or township bridge funds, or even if we wanted to use our own state aid funds for a bridge. This is kind of the first step, would be adopting this resolution. So questions? I have some questions for the board, and you may have some questions for me. The first of all, I want to make sure that the board is okay with me and my office kind of doing this idea where we bundle all these projects, or all these bridges into one project and kind of managing that RFP process and that engineering consultant contract. And then the other question, I think, to, to consider is how do you want to handle the township commitments? Do we need to get into a formal agreement with each of those townships and the city of Foley? A written statement from their board, and that's something that we could talk about at a future meeting as well. But those are the things I think we should consider as well as we go forward with this process.
Chris, do we have, you're talking about bundling them. Do we have, is there enough pool or money in the pool to do them all? Or do we have to prioritize which ones go forward?
So we have about, I was just checking this balance yesterday. We have about six-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars in our township bridge account. We could be really close or really tight on what we have now. But we get, it's a little over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year that we were getting from this, this annual allotment. So if we don't have it all in this year, we, we might be able to space the construction contracts out so we span maybe multiple years and, and have enough to cover it. That would be my, my goal, is to make sure that we have enough in that township bridge account to cover that.
I mean, the one you're talking about, that nine-two-zero-zero and Sucker Creek Road, that's a huge traffic road. I mean, there's, you know, tons of traffic in that road.
Yeah. And that would be the goal of the RFP, that we would write it in a way that when they're submitting their proposals, they factor in the cost for them to recommend to us or the townships the most cost-effective solution. Is that a large precast bulk's covert, or some, sometimes maybe it's better to go back with a, a spanned bridge? But that would be our goal, is to vet out what would be the most cost-effective solution in each one of these, these locations.
I, I like, I like the process where the townships are held accountable, as well as, you know, the, coming from the fund. They were not just gonna divvy out the money, you know, they, they have to look at what they want to do, too. So I like that process.
Mr. Chair, I concur. I, we should get the townships to buy in on this, first of all. I guess we're gonna spend their money. They ought to be involved in it, and.
Yeah, I think you, I think you just answered my question. Because I was wondering if it's, if we're, if it's appropriate to do this resolution first, or if it's appropriate to get a buy-in, and that was, that was my exact question. And I don't, I don't know if it is.
I think we could go ahead and adopt the resolution. That just kind of starts the process. We haven't committed any dollars just yet. It, it would be the first step to show the state, hey, we, we have these bridges, we're prioritized. Eventually, we'll be coming and asking for funding for these, and that's another application that we would have to submit. So I think we could go ahead and adopt the resolution without committing any dollars yet.
Yeah, go ahead.
Chris, we get, we'll get some for our time and efforts we put in, we get some reimbursement from the townships, is that right?
Uh, yeah, so we can, we can track our time spent, my time spent on this. If I use the assistant engineers or any of the technicians' time, we could certainly track that and, and apply that towards their ten thousand dollars, and, and then use that from the township bridge funds to cover the engineering cost of those structures as well.
One other, one other question.
Go ahead, Mr.
Do you have that, the one bridge you talked, I think it's on a hundred and fifteenth street in Langola that's condemned or whatever? That's not part of this project, right?
Yep, this, it's this one over here, over here in Maywood?
No, in Langola Way.
Oh, yeah, this one up here, yeah, on Fifteenth Street. Correct. That is not included here.
Because they're gonna, they're gonna abandon that road.
Okay, good. That was not, that was kind of some of the talks that I'd had with some of the townships, you know, a while ago. So it was not being prioritized to replace, so.
The property changed hands and their, the one owner bought the rest of the property, so now they can abandon it. And the other one's got access off of a Morrison County road.
Did it state laws, since it was originally designated a bridge at one time, and I don't even know all the history of it, until that bridge is actually physically removed, it, it can, you know, still show up on our inventory. We have it noted in our inventories that it's closed, and that's part of my responsibility to make sure every year that it does stay closed and, and the public isn't using it. But until it's actually physically removed, it'll, so that's maybe a conversation we have with Watap someday, is maybe they explore options, actually removing that bridge, that structure.
That bridge in Maywood, is that still closed, Chris?
Yes.
And that's one of them?
Um, so that's kind of interesting. This is a, the one in Maywood, this, this bridge right here, L zero-zero-seven-two. We had applied for bridge funding a couple years ago and, and was actually denied. And the reason the state denied it was due to very low traffic volumes. And the fact that there's another township road just west of it that, in the opinion of some, is a, is a very feasible detour. The township, no, I have been in conversation with them. They still have a desire to fund it. What I was planning on doing is including that, this structure in the RFP, have the engineer design it and recommend a solution with a cost, and then see if they want to move forward with some of their own funds to replace that structure if it's not eligible for some kind of state funding. So it would be part of the engineering contract, but we wouldn't see, I don't think we would see engineering or construction contracts come through our office.
Mr. Chair? Yeah, so these are separate pools of money, so it won't delay any of our county bridges in any way, shape, or form, right?
Correct. It's, it's kind of like a separate pot of money, so it shouldn't affect ours. So we've already have in motion.
Mr. Chair.
So then when we get a commitment from the townships, then we're gonna get into legal to draw up a contract with them, correct?
If, if, yeah, if that's the direction that's being given to proceed in, yes, that's what we would do, so. I, I tell you that from Maywood Township, I have a letter, a written letter of commitment, but you're right, that's
Legal binding contract.
It's probably better, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve and adopt this resolution.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? Now I'll call a question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Very good, all right.
An update for us?
Yeah, I was gonna provide a little engineering update on kind of the happenings in the highway department. So for the last week, maintenance side, we've been graveling a number of our gravel roads. We are hired belly dumps to haul our gravel from our least gravel pit. And we have, we're using ten belly dumps. And we're actually, we, we divided up on, we're doing multiple roads at, at one time, using two of our loaders in the pit. And so last week, we were approaching almost three thousand cubic yards a day that, that we were hauling out. So it's conceivable that this week, because we only crush thirty thousand a year, we should be able to just about wrap that up this week, so two weeks of renting belly dump. So two weeks of renting belly dumps has been very efficient to get that, that out of the pit and on the gravel roads where, where it's needed. But I will add, some of that was to shoulder some of our patches that we did, our maintenance patches. Those long maintenance patches, we shoulder that with our equipment and our forces. So some of that same gravel went to me, uh, shoulder those roads. Other maintenance activities right now is really just, we're doing some isolated brush hogging for brush control within the rideaway. After August 1st, we should be turning loose all four of our mowing tractors and trying to mow the full width of the rideaway before, before winter frees up, so. And once again, that's by state law. We can mow the first pass next to the roadway shoulder before August 1st. But we have to wait till August 1st or after before we can mow the full width of our county road rideaways. We are allowed for safety reasons to address other concerns, which is kind of what we're doing with the isolated brushing. We have some areas where brushing trees and limbs are starting to encroach and we're, we're, we're just attacking those intermittently instead of doing a full rideaway to rideaway before August 1st. On the construction side, our projects on Cassau four and Cassau six are finished east of town here. Down in St. Cloud, this project was tied with four and six, Cassau eight. The paving is finished. We still need to gravel just outside of the paved shoulder. We need pavement markings and rumble strips on the shoulders. But the end of this week or by the first part of next week, that project should be complete as well. Cassau 12 on east of Rice, the grading in the reconstruction portion at County Road 56 is complete. And gravel operations are continuing. Those should continue through today and tomorrow. And hopefully by Friday, they will be paving the first lift of the two minutes across that reconstruction portion. Here's kind of the, the tricky part. Even though we have some pavement down, we're going to leave that section of the roadway barricade as closed, except for those, those residents that live through there, because we don't have the guardrail in. We will, that bridge that we're crossing over won't have guardrail protecting it just yet. But that's by design. We wanted to pave underneath that guardrail to protect that, that slope from erosion and things. So the idea is to pave that and then the guardrail post will go through that pavement. And then outside of the post will be protected by pavement to keep it from eroding in the future. So, but hopefully by next week, they will be paving that up to the top and then paving the remainder of Cassau 12. So we had a mill and overlay, if you recall, on the whole stretch from Cassau 12 from Rice all the way out to 25. And so that should be happening next week. Attentively, the plan on Cassau two, west of Rice, is on Friday, July 31st, start the reclaim operation. And so that's a full depth reclamation, where they'll be grinding up the existing pavement and mixing with the gravel below it. And anticipating start paving that around August 6th. If everything goes as planned, we should be wrapped up with all of our construction work this, this summer by the middle of August, which hasn't, we haven't been finished that, that soon in a long time, so. We hope, we hope that happens, so. For a big reason is we hired a couple of summer interns and around the middle of August is usually when they go back to school. And then we lose, lose help and we're scrambling in September to cover everything to get, to get done. So that was a brief update to the highway department. If there's any questions?
Chris, when they're going to scrape the patches?
Oh, yeah, so that should happen anytime. So yeah, we have that contract for a striper to stripe all those patches and some of the roads in the county. That could happen at any time. And we, we get a benefit from them. They give us pretty good prices because they usually come through and stripe ours when they're on to some other bigger job either north or south of us. So honestly, I don't have a good answer for you. Is it, it could happen tomorrow or it could happen next week?
Mr. Chair, so you got that email about that piece of road by Lamar Gilboard Company? And no one seems to want to own that road, so it's not, it hasn't been maintained. Can't we just pick and patch mix and pave it and be done?
Well, you know, with anything in life, it comes down to dollars and cents.
It's not a short piece. It's not going to take much, but.
Yeah, I was, I was visiting with the auditor just before coming in here and we were talking about that road. We, we foresee some kind of discussion coming back to the board to get direction. I mean, that's, that seems like the easy thing is, but, but who, who wants to pay for it? Who, who wants to say that we pay for it? Interesting situation. Why did the land go to tax forfeited if it was a public road? If it went tax forfeited, it makes you think it wasn't ever public. It was somebody owned it privately. But there are a couple of residences I know that are using that to access their, their homes, so.
But isn't tax forfeiture come back to the county then? I mean, isn't our property at that point?
Uh, I don't know. She's not in here. It's tax for, I'm not quite sure. I think more of, we're kind of just the stewards of tax forfeited. I don't know if we actually own the properties if it goes tax forfeited. We're just kind of stewards of the property for the state. So maybe that's the first thing.
So if you're a steward, you probably have to pave it then if you're the steward.
And I think, we got our county, assistant county attorney, maybe she can add some clarity here.
It's held in trust by the county and then other municipalities may purchase or get it for free if they use it in a certain way. So we just hold it as in trust for the public.
So can we talk Minn Township into taking it then? Is that, should be our goal or what?
I believe I am sort of aware of this situation. I haven't looked at it in a long time. I know there was a question of ownership, tax forfeiture. I think Minn dot did some stuff complicated.
You're right. I mean, this road was created, I think, as part of a Minn dot plat when Highway 23 was expanded to four lanes many years ago and.
So it was a give back or whatever they call it, yeah.
Yeah.
And I think there was a deed that actually needed it from Minn dot, the township, if I remember correctly.
There might have been.
And that added on your twist. So it's not a clear scenario. It would have to be something that looked a little bit further.
To be continued, huh?
It is a very short piece of road that has caused a lot of consternation.
We're going to spend more, more time in researching owns it than would cost a payment probably, but.
Chris, how's our sales tax money?
Yeah, yeah, very interesting. In our county, it's kind of an enigma. We've seen steady growth in our tax, the sales tax collections through this COVID recession pandemic. So I don't know if that's because more people are just staying home and shopping online and thanks to the Wayfair decision, you know, a few years ago, those are, those are taxed. And so I, I can't explain it. You know, you hear about, you know, all the hard times that a lot of businesses are having, but each month our sta, our sales tax collections have been higher than the previous month, so.
Instead of going to crossroads, you're going to Amazon, huh?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's right, yeah. That'll eventually come back to get us to lower tax values, yeah.
Maybe permanent.
Yeah.
Yeah, could be permanent.
Okay. That, anything else? That it, Chris?
That's all I have.
Okay, well, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Monte Hedley.
George has this next out of Mr. Chair.
George, veteran service officer. We have an information management system. He wants to explain to us.
Good morning. I'm here today to get the board approval to obtain a new veterans information management system for Banton County. The one we use today is referred to as VIMS, Veterans Information Management Systems. Been used for about 20 years. It's outdated. They don't have all the forms on it that we need. We can't exchange electronically with other veteran service organizations or with the VA. I've actually been looking at replacing this for probably over the last three years. So I've done a lot of research on it, talked to a lot of other people that use it, had demos. And there's only a few of these systems out there that are used for veterans management. And Vet Pro by Panoramic is one of them that I think is pretty good. It's web based, so there's no IT support. Our current system, when they do updates, they send me an email with the updates. I have to give it to the IT department. They have to load it. Current system, all our data is housed on our servers. With this new Vet Pro, it's web based, so no local IT support is needed. It's 24 by 7 access, any time of the day or night. It's allows secure transfer of information. It stores all data. Now, the system I have, when I create documents and I want to store them, I have to take them and, and scan them. Admin person scans them and then we put them in meta file. This system will house all that data. It's unlimited storage on it. It's case management capable, meaning I can put notes in the system. This, this system, Panoramic, has been really persistent and excited about trying to get more users in the state of Minnesota. And there's a few right now, but this was an opportune time to do it. Because normally the cost for migration and setup is about $8,490. And they're giving us a deal toward, till the end of July, for $900 is the user fee for two people, myself and the admin person. So it's a great opportunity to do it. I can pay for it with grant funds or we might even be able to pay for the first year with COVID-19 funds. And so Michelle, our attorney, has done a fantastic job in negotiating and talking to the company since, at least January, right? Do you want to say anything about that?
We worked extensively and I work with friends of ours, Sterns County and I've been working with Turner County. And we really were able to work out even good terms for the payment app, right, best practices, venue, all those important terms. So fortunately, I think we had power and numbers and we got what we needed. So you are, you will see five documents for your consideration. Hopefully they will be your, your standards.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
So is it going to be easier or harder to use for the customers, for the vets? Is it?
Well, they don't, they don't actually use the system. I'm the one that uses the system. The, the validity in this, it, it's, the VA is going to paperless. They've continued to go to paperless. And so this system will allow me to help a veteran do a benefit claim and electronic, electronically transfer to the VA and/or the service organizations. Now, Vietnam Veterans of America, that's a veteran service organizations, they use this at the federal level. So we're headed towards the capability here where I don't have to create a claim, print it off, and then I have to give it to the admin person to scan it and put it in electronically. Then put it in an envelope, get the postage on it and mail it to St. Paul. We want to do away with all that.
Okay, you've heard the request. More discussion?
Also, otherwise also move that request.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Motion to second approve courts of the Vet Pro, I think that's what you call it. For, and for discussion? None? All questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's carried.
No, I do have the agreement.
Yep.
When, when do you want to sign it? An hour later?
Uh, after the meeting we sign. I sign a whole bunch of.
I'll give it to Vicki.
I got, yep.
Thank you very much.
I got a whole bunch of homework to do.
Just stay up for class.
Yeah.
Only if you're good.
Okay. Monte, I think you're up next.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I think the, the airport advisory ad hoc group is looking to each member of county and the city of St. Cloud to appoint your two representatives to the airport, what will eventually become the Airport Commission. Initially, it'll serve as the Airport Advisory Committee until the FAA approves the transition of the airport from the city to the commission. But initially, again, they're looking for each county's two appointees. So there was going to be a meeting yesterday of the Airport Advisory Ad Hoc Group. They delayed that until August 10th so that they give the counties more time to decide who the appointees would be. So I'm, I was somewhat hoping that you could have some discussion today and possibly consensus on, and, and, and action too, if you're inclined to, to name list two appointees. And then when we go to that August 10th meeting, then we would have our, our two appointees named. So I, I think there was some consensus around perhaps one of the individuals that you interviewed. Less consensus around the remaining three. So I, perhaps that might be what it comes down to is discussing who the, who your second person might be.
Do we have a, Mr. Chair, do we have a call meeting before August, you said August 10th?
You certainly could. None specifically scheduled, but if you'd like to have another committee, the whole to discuss this, we absolutely could do that, yes.
And then make a decision in our next meeting?
I think at some point, there should be formal action at a board meeting to make those two appointments, yes.
I think we have time. Yeah, there's, when we're next board meeting be August 4th? August 4th, yeah, we got, it would probably be time.
Hi, Mr. Chair. Sterns County's been advertising on the radio for the last few days about, you know, if you want to, want to be an applicant, please get your application in. So they have, must not, not even have looked at their applicants yet.
So they got over a dozen of them, so they, yeah.
So I would incline to agree with Mr. Hein and that, maybe we should have a call and discuss it.
Okay.
Uh, so possibly then next week, if you'd like to have some consensus reached before your August 4th.
Right.
Meeting, so we, yeah, so we set those later in the meeting?
Yeah, we can do that later.
Okay.
Okay.
Let me get the presentation.
Yeah, we've, they've been, Mike has been so patiently waiting out there. He's going to, he wants to take a little, we'll take just a short break while he's doing that also.
Taking a short break apparently.
And get some coffee.
This ought to be a lot of the session that didn't happen, right? Nothing happened, but at least recorded.
It's all yours. Take one short break.
Take one, a short break.
Okay, now we're, we are now back in session. And next up, we have our MICA end of session update. And good morning, Matt.
Good morning. Uh, good morning, Commissioners, Matt Mossman, Executive Director of the Minnesota Intercounty Association. Thank you very much for your membership, continued membership in the association. I feel like I'm the, the suit from St. Paul and, and the tie and, um, would be with, working from home most of the time. It's actually pretty unusual for me to have a tie on these days, so, which is nice. Thank you for the opportunity and thank you, Commissioners Pop and Berkeley in particular, for your service on the MICA Board. Very appreciate it, your regular attendance, really appreciate your engagement, the regular participation. I had kind of hoped to show up this morning after being up late to tell you that my presentation was completely wrong and everything had changed now and the legislature had passed a lot of things that made the presentation obsolete. Unfortunately, I can only tell you that I was up late and the presentation is still pretty accurate. So with that, I do want to touch base a little bit and just lay some really quick background because this really has been an unprecedented past six months or so. Obviously with the pandemic in the world, as well as the, um, the, the social unrest following the, the killing of George Floyd and issues that have obviously been around for, for years and have come to the surface. So the evolution, just taking you quickly back, this was going to be a short session focused on bonding. It started February 11th. Hearings were packed, the agendas were packed full on legislative hearing schedules. Bonding was the only thing that everybody agreed should happen. It's the traditional even-year legislative session item. There was a small positive balance projected for the state budget, so there was some tax and supplemental budget provisions that were being talked about. Fast forward just a little bit, by week nine, um, there was more and more information, obviously, coming to light about the COVID, um, virus having reached the United States. Here in Minnesota, bipartisan agreement, pretty quickly, but somewhat quietly, but pretty quickly passed through with broad agreement in the Minnesota House and Senate to fund that first $21 million of public health preparedness money, some of which was distributed to county public health agencies. And one week later, March 13th, President Trump declared a national emergency. Governor Walz declared an emergency. And by the end of that weekend and the start of the next week, a full agenda for the week of March 16th of legislative hearings was canceled. And the legislature announced that they would meet by alternative means and on an on-call basis only from March 16th to the 14th. So from there, everything changed. MICA had a platform, we had priorities, the legislature had priorities, bonding was an issue. And really, for the next several weeks, we moved into a mode where not only policymakers and lobbyists and the media and the public, but you all as county boards, we as staff really tried to figure out what by alternative means was going to mean, both in terms of how we did our work, as well as the responding to executive orders and stay-at-home orders. So the reason I want to point that out a bit, the, well, let me just say, the legislature met intermittently then through May with an agenda that really shifted almost entirely to COVID response legislation and a sort of a unique approach where anything, before a lead piece of legislation came to the floor of the House and Senate, it was already agreed upon by all four caucuses so that there wasn't frankly much time spent on the floor other than to pass legislation. There was no or very limited physical access to the Capitol. It's a very kind of unusual thing for an industry, if you will, where it's all about relationships and seeing each other and, and handshakes and meetings to actually, you're doing your job probably better if you're not trying to get into the Capitol because everyone wanted you to be social, social distancing. New unprecedented House and Senate voting procedures for how those chambers worked and eventually the emergence of, of new protocols for legislative hearings. I point part of, you know, all of that out in terms of the, the quickness and the process we went through because to adjust to the new COVID-focused agenda, because I think it also calls attention to some of the work that MICA does and the platform that we offer to all of you and to your staff that oftentimes doesn't get the same attention as the public policy work that we do and advocacy that we do for you, which is that you see at the bottom of this page, MICA facilitates a number of staff group meetings, most of them, many of them on a monthly basis. Your administrators, your fiscal officers, these are all separate groups, human resource directors, human service directors, public health directors, engineers, risk managers. Almost all of those groups meet regularly. We facilitate meetings and agendas on a monthly basis. And as we were transitioning from the March timeframe and the COVID onset, those, those platforms that your human resource directors, I think instead of monthly, we met weekly. In many cases, administrators met more frequently, but there was a lot of engagement and hopefully help in trying to figure out congressional action that was happening. There was a paid family leave in the FFCRA, the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act, that had a lot of, uh, complexity to it, that counties were trying to figure out what it meant for your workforce. Obviously, the executive orders and the closure orders and, and also just identifying needs that county governments had to go back to the legislature during this COVID-focused agenda to say, what urgent, what sort of changes do we need to state law to order to facilitate you all to do your work? Well, people are not in their offices and are social distancing. A number of those things, and we'll touch on them throughout, but this is just a quick list of things that got passed during that timeframe, a lot of it just to keep the wheels of, of government working while closure orders were in place. So legislative appropriations and grants for public health, um, delivery flexibilities in terms of telehealth and other things in human service programs areas, area, ensuring that public meetings could continue remotely and yet in compliance with open meeting laws. A lot of different temporary extensions around driver's licenses, but also electronic and, and mail applications for, for county licensing functions like marriage and other land records work. And election eventually, and you heard some of it earlier, one of the pieces of legislation that got bipartisan support and moved through the legislature despite the beginning agendas being very disparate proposals for changes in election law, the COVID crisis brought, brought parties together fairly quickly around how to get federal money out to help ensure safe and secure primary and general elections. That included an extended deadline for polling place timelines. And, and really the highlight here is the 2.9 million estate money and 14.3 million of federal Help America Vote Act money that, some of which you were discussing earlier, is coming to your county to help facilitate, um, the fall, uh, elections. So as May 18th rolled around, the regular adjournment date approached the original, if you will, agenda from the, back in February, the original agenda tended to resurface with the significant addition of a new issue that MICA placed a very high priority on as it, as it started to emerge. And that was the passage of the Federal CARES Act, that was the 2.2 trillion dollar relief package that included $150 billion spread across the states, of which Minnesota got $2.2 billion in CARES Act stabilization funding relief. And so the regular agenda of bonding, supplemental budget taxes, along with continued COVID-related agenda. But as the session came to a close, um, none of those things got over the finish line in the regular session. I think as the, as the legislature started to get in the swing of meeting regularly and finding out how to meet remotely, I think it was frankly, for the regular session, one, it was just sort of too much to sort of then get done by March 18th. And the second thing is that with the peacetime emergency declaration in Minnesota, the way that that works is that when the governor extends the peacetime emergency, as I think you probably know, 30 days at a time is the most that he can extend it. The statutes now require that he's mandated to call a special session each time he extends it for an additional 30 days to allow the legislature to make a different judgment about whether to continue the emergency. And so there was this expectation as May 18th came to an end that there was going to be a June 12th session to extend the peacetime emergency and that sort of, kind of facilitated the kicking the can down the road. So, um, the good news is that a bipartisan agreement evolved among legislators as, in the lead-up to the first special session that started on June 12th for how to distribute the CARES Act money to local governments here in Minnesota, which was our big push. So, uh, the, starting with the, the headline, the end of the story for Benton County first, it amounted to $4.9 million one time to be distributed to Benton County. And again, that originated from the 2.187 total that came to Minnesota. And throughout the process, MICA had been really pushing hard, making the case that counties, in particular in the local government, partnerships were on the front line of many of the functions, be it public health, public safety, human services, elections, courts, just a number of things that were really most likely to incur, incur the costs related to facilitating and responding to, um, the COVID pandemic. And so we should have that be reflected in the distribution. Initially, their talk was that there should be 667 million go to, um, county governments and we were pushing for 60% of that. What happened and really broke the, broke the logjam to reach a, a solution and a, and a compromise was that some federal guidance came out, a new, updated federal guidance that sort of implied that the amount that should go to local governments was a bit higher than that. And so that number was the 841.5 and that really broke, broke the, the logjam because it effectively put more money on, on the table to divvy up to local governments. And in the end of the day, the compromise was to distribute 55% of that or $467 million to the 85 counties that did not receive direct allotments, which was just head up in Ramsey. So in the end of the day, $467 million went to the 85 counties, of which 4.9 million is coming here to Benton. It is pretty broad. I know Monty has, I'm sure, been, been talking to you about it. It is, uh, it is, uh, a broad allowable uses and with a lot of deference, but also responsibility on the part of you all as decision makers to determine. And, and some of the key words here are that it is for necessary expenses that were, are incurred due to the COVID-19 pandemic and that were unplanned expenses in the most recently adopted budget. By unplanned expenses, the federal government guidance means that expenses, it means that it's either expenses that cannot be lawfully paid for from a budget line that exists or that the expenses are substantially different than the use of funds that were planned at the time you passed the budget. And that's really the sort of prism under which most local government money is, is likely to be eligible. It cannot be used for lost revenues. And then the caveat I added there at the bottom is there were three areas of, um, need on the part of county governments that were being discussed at the end of, during session. And that did not get funded. And when this action money was distributed, there was an expectation that counties use these monies to pay those costs and not expect additional money coming from the state. And those three areas were the local county match, FEMA match for COVID-related expenses. The state is expecting that these CARES Act dollars be used to cover any FEMA match, local FEMA match for COVID-related expenses. Any workers' compensation costs that arise as a result of the COVID pandemic. There's an expectation that these funds be used for that. And if there's any public health expenses such as contact tracing, et cetera, that are arising, that, that we, that county should not expect additional money from the state for that. I will just, uh, before I turn it over to Nancy, just pause there and say, this, of course, did also not happen in, in the first special session, came to an end again. One, as I mentioned, just kind of passed over earlier briefly. The new issue then between regular and special session, obviously, is, was the, the killing of George Floyd that happened, which added, changed the agenda yet again to add policing reform to the package. And just fast forward to, to last night, I'm sure you've read in the newspaper at, at this point now, that early in the morning hours, the House and Senate passed a bipartisan policing reform package. The House brought up the bonding bill and then was, which actually had tax provisions in it as well. And then was poised to bring up a supplemental budget bill. If that passed, the, the bill has to, the bonding bill has to originate in the House. The House brought up the bill, it garnered 75 votes, I believe it was, which is, and no Republican minority party votes. It needed six minority party votes to reach the super majority to, to pass. So that did not pass and consequently, the legislative session came to an end without any bonding tax or special revenue provisions. We'll talk more, there was some really great stuff in there. It would have been a $1.8 billion bill, 1.35 billion of geo-bonding. So it would have been the largest bonding bill in state history in that regard. And Steve will talk more about a number of things that were in there that were good from a transportation standpoint, but a lot of local projects as well, were in the, were in the bill. That's all, I'm going to pause there. I'm going to turn it over to Nancy and then Steve, and then I'll come up and finish up. I do want to finish up with, well, I think frankly, given the dramatic change and evolution in the agenda over the months from the beginning of, of session, particularly driven by the COVID pandemic, it turns out that especially with the CARES Act distribution, it was a, a pretty good, um, well, if the bonding bill had passed, it would have been a really good session, I think, for counties, all in all. That really is disappointing on, on many levels. The CARES Act money certainly, I think it was, became a big priority. The CARES Act money certainly, I think it was, became a big priority for us, and I think is really important to positioning local governments well for what I'll talk about at the end of the meeting, which is a significant budget deficit that I see coming. So, I'm going to turn it over to Nancy, and I can come back up for any questions you have too.
So, this is what we do for fun. We were all up until about 2:30 this morning, just waiting to see what may or may not happen. And Mr. Chair and Commissioners, Nancy Seleski and I do Health and Human Services for MICA, and it's a pleasure to be here this morning. So, all things considered, with the emergence of COVID, I think Health and Human Services did pretty well. Matt mentioned that the end of session was, of the regular session, things kind of fell apart a little bit, and that included the HHS policy bill that we were watching. As the clock ticked through midnight on May, toward midnight on May 18th, we realized that that was not going to come to pass either. The reason it did not was because there was an article in the bill that some members were concerned that would have put in statute DHS powers. And there were just some concerns with putting that in statute, but that also included our waiver extension language that we were working on as well. So, that went away. Fast forward then to the first special session, and it did come up. The agreement going into that special session was let's take Article 9 out of the bill and look at that separately and pass the policy bill with all of the things that were in that. Couple of things I want to mention that were MICA priorities that did pass as part of that bill. We had what was called the Birth to Eight Collaborative Initiative, and that focuses on children during the first eight years of their life to prevent gaps in services, promote school readiness, and collaboration across sectors to provide lifelong health and success. That bill or that provision did pass as part of the omnibus HHS policy bill that was signed into law. Secondly, was the Yellow Line Jail Diversion Project. I think you've all heard about this. It originated in Blue Earth County. And basically, the way it works is a person is picked up with either a mental health or a substance use issue, is brought in for booking. At the site, there is a social worker at the pre-booking site, actually. And if that person, if the social worker agrees with law enforcement that this is appropriate, that these folks get treatment rather than being put in a jail cell, a plan is established for them, and this allows for Medicaid reimbursement to be able to monitor that person's success on this plan. That also was included in the omnibus policy bill that passed and was signed by the governor. So then, going back to the DHS waivers, as you know, we're all doing business very differently. We've had to come up with innovative ways to meet with clients, et cetera. So, as a result, DHS has granted, I think, close to 70, 75 waivers. And our concern was when the emergency ends, what happens? Do these waivers just get flipped off? We go back to doing business the way we had been doing? That would create a problem. So, we worked, early on, AMC put together a blue ribbon committee, which was comprised of 15 county commissioners, five of whom are MICA commissioners, I just want to mention them, Kiskaden, Phobie, Landkammer, Rognes, and Slawick were all part of this group. And they went through these 75 waivers and determined which ones were working and perhaps which ones were not, and which ones we would like to see extended for an additional time period. So, what happened is they came up with about 12 to 15 suggestions that they wanted to see continued. And then, that list was provided to DHS and the legislature, and it was built on beyond that. But I just want to mention that this originated with counties. It was a very fast turnaround. I think this happened in about a two-week, three-week period. And again, they came up with about 15 waivers that they want extended. I should back up and just say that all waivers are extended for at least 60 days after the emergency ends, but I'm going to mention the ones that this work group came up with. These are extended until June 30th of next year. And then, that puts the legislature in the driver's seat. There's been some criticism about, you know, from some, from the legislature, that the administration has too much authority. So, this puts the legislature in charge as to whether these waivers should continue or not. Excuse me, they're really focusing on tele-everything. We are using telemedicine for waiver programs, schooling to mental health, targeted case management, healthcare, mental health care, substance use care, and a host of other things. And so, that is a big chunk of what those waiver extensions are looking at. Also, there was language that modifies licensing requirements related to substance use disorder treatment and mental health centers. And there's also language that partially waives the county costs relative to individuals that are at state-operated facilities. This would be ANOKA, Metropolitan Regional Treatment Center, the CBHH Hospitals, et cetera. When those folks are ready to be released because they no longer need that level of care, counties pay 100% of the freight for those folks until they get placed at an alternative setting. This provides some relief to counties if that person, if the reason that the discharge has been delayed is because the person has contracted COVID. Also, there's language that allows for temporary absence for a person from their home and still remain eligible for housing support if they need to be away because of COVID. You want to make sure that they have a place to go back to after COVID. There's also flexibilities for personal care assistance, home and community-based services, and they also authorize the use of telemedicine for patient assessments and consultations in the medical cannabis program. There were a couple of, excuse me, waivers that we wanted to see pass, but they were both related to child protection issues, and the legislature just did not want to go there at that point. So, like I said, we were successful. That bill also was signed into law at the end of the special session, number one. Still back at special session one, the legislature did pass rate increases for providers who care for low-income children in the CCAP program. And this brings the state into federal compliance, frees up federal funds that are available for the program that must be spent within three years. And all of this is being paid for by a surplus of federal funds that's in the Child Care Development Blog Grant Fund. In terms of public health, tobacco prevention, T-21 passed, as you saw. This raises the age for Minnesotans to purchase tobacco, e-cigarettes, and other nicotine projects, raises it to age 21. The bill or the language also expands the prevention of tobacco use to charter schools. Early on, Matt talked about this in March, when COVID was becoming much more apparent, legislature did put together $21 million for a public health response account, and $8.5 million of that did go directly to local public health. So, that happened early in March, signed into law by the governor, March 10th. Then, a little bit later in the month, they added an additional $50 million to that account, and those funds are appropriated to the Department of Health to be used for pandemic prevention activities. They also put $150 million from the general fund in the healthcare response fund, and this makes grants to eligible providers for costs relating to planning and preparing and responding to an outbreak of COVID. Also funds the establishment and operation of temporary sites to provide testing services, to provide treatment beds, or to quarantine affected individuals. What didn't happen, a number of things. Again, we were hoping for a little bit of these things to be resolved last night, but it did not happen. Governor had a supplemental budget bill early on, I think it spent about $160 million. That did not pass during the regular session. I do want to mention that included in that proposal was $8.8 million for counties to reimburse us for substance use disorder services. There was the accounting error, if you will, at DHS, and this would have reimbursed us for that. That's included in that bill that did not pass. That $150, $60 million bill at the end of the special session became about a $58 million bill that they were looking at spending. That also didn't happen either in special session one or two. Couple of things I just wanted to mention that were included in that $58 million bill, had it passed, would have been a $500 increase for MFPIP recipients, or not an increase, it would have been one-time bonus basically for MFPIP recipients. And then, there was an adjustment for direct care and treatment of $38 million and personal care assistance rate increases. So, those things, again, did not pass. We're thinking, you know, when special session three happens, which will be August 12th or about then, that these things might show up there as well. Couple of things I just want to mention specific to Benton. Your Human Services Director, along with Sherburne, Stearns, and Wrights, meet with Senator Jerry Relf on a regular basis. And one of the outcomes of a meeting that happened last summer was some discussion about child protection and the need to respond within 24 hours when, in certain cases. And Senator Relf agreed to carry a bill that we had introduced before COVID, and Representative Pinto, who's a prosecutor, Ramsey County Prosecutor, introduced it in the House. And this basically would have given us, rather than the 24 hours, it would have given us a five-day response time if there's a law enforcement investigation underway, so law enforcement has already seen the individual, and if the, or if the child is residing somewhere where the, where the person that's been alleged to have been mistreated, this child has no access to the child. Under that very limited, certain circumstances, that we would have had five days to respond to that. That was also considered as part of the waiver extension, but the legislature just chose not to go, again, go that way in terms of child protection issues at this time. We do intend to go back again next year. And then, there was language that Senator Abler and Representative Lebling both introduced, and that did pass the Senate during the special session, number two. Basically, would have provided retention grants for day training facilities for the disabled. There are a number of facilities that are in danger of going under, and this would have provided about $21 million to keep their doors open. Also included with that legislation was another waiver that we were seeking that would have allowed MFPIP applications to be taken remotely. This required an electronic signature, verbal signatures would not have been allowed. But again, this did, it did pass the Senate, was sent over to the House, and they did not take it up last night. Broadband, again, was a big discussion in both Senate, the regular session and Senate, special session one. I just want to mention, this was agreed to by all four caucuses, but did not finish. The Senate passed it both, the regular session, special session one, House did not get to it. It would have provided $15 million in distance learning, and then $2 million in new telemedicine equipment. It would created a grant program, and county boards and local public health would have been able to tap into that $2 million. And then, finally, it also included an additional $10 million in the state's border-to-border broadband grant program. That did not happen. The last thing that I would mention is you all see the discussion about DHS and DHS issues. We do have a new commissioner now that seems to be doing her best to right the ship, but there were several things that were introduced during the session. I just want to mention one that MICA was very much involved with, that Senator Dreheim and Senator Rosen introduced. And basically, it would have created a Human Services Transformation Commission. And again, this is with the idea that we need long-range transformational approaches to redesign basically how DHS and counties deliver human services. Bill was introduced late in session, do have some support within the Senate Republican Caucus, but was not heard this year. We're hoping to have some kind of an interim hearing during this interim, just to keep it on the legislature's radar. With that, I would say that, again, all things considered, and having to shift gears many times this session, I think we did pretty well in this area. I do want to do a shout out to a couple of your folks that I work closely with, both Bob Cornelius and Nicole Ruhafer, very active in MICA's groups. We rely on their expertise for a lot, and they represent not only Benton County, but counties statewide very well. Just want to mention that. With that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Any questions? Maybe we take them all at the end, I think. Yeah, I wrote a couple down that probably crossed lines here, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I handle transportation issues for MICA. It's always good to be in Benton County. Nice to see everybody. Well, this year, as we've said before, about 95% of everything we have going in transportation is wrapped up in the bonding bill. And as was previously stated, the even-numbered shorter session is always the bonding session, so everybody was geared up and ready to go. And then, COVID-19 hit. So, I'm here this morning to try to explain how a bill that everybody publicly has said they want to have passed, that everybody wants to vote for, has managed not to become law at the end of the regular session, the end of the first special session, and as of last night, now the end of the second session. In a lot of games, that's three strikes and you're out. We have to hope for a pass ball and a way to get one more swing at it. Because let me give my report in reverse to graphically sort of show what it means to Minnesota if they don't manage to get the bonding bill passed in terms of transportation. If there is no bonding bill, there won't be any local road bonding money. There won't be any local bridge bonding money. There'd be no money for the local road wetland replacement program, which basically will demolish next year's spring construction season. There'll be no greater Minnesota transit money, no port development money, no rail service money, and no airport money. So, it's going to be grim. And they all know that. And what's frustrating about the situation, I'm going to try to lay this out, totally factually based politics over here, because we've got both politics on the left and the right that have intervened to complicate this situation. We have a bonding bill that was developed in the House, a bonding bill developed in the Senate, and the starting point at the beginning of the year was at least a billion-dollar differential, with the House bill being larger than the Senate bill by something well over a billion dollars. However, one of the interesting things about that dynamic is that the Senate bill, which was much smaller, had a transportation section that was pretty much as large as the House in many categories, and I'll go through those. But what happened with COVID-19 and all of the politics that intervened by the time we got to the end of the regular session, sort of out of the blue, the House Republican Caucus leader brought to the forefront his view of the issue of executive authority that Governor Walz had exercised with the agreement of the legislature back in March for these various types of executive powers. Unfortunately, he put the bonding bill up against the demand for those kinds of changes. The governor has not been willing to change, the House has backed him up. And it's kind of an apple-orange dynamic that frankly, is almost impossible to solve if you don't get some give someplace. And that was the story of the end of the regular session. Then, we went into the first special session, and in the intervening period, we had the tragedy with the police issue, what many people view to be the murder of George Floyd, and all of the rioting and the ramifications of that, which were focused largely in Minneapolis, St. Paul, and certain inner ring suburbs, which led to a lot of property destruction, a lot of other recommendations for, quote, reform, which is always in the eye of the beholder, and the politics that then started to spin out of control then. So, as we got to the end of the first special session, now we had principally Democrats from Minneapolis and St. Paul demanding police reform, a variety of expenditures to repair buildings and so forth. And they put that up against the bonding bill, but they wouldn't vote for the bonding bill unless we got those things changed first. So, now, we had two impediments and weren't making progress on either one. Three weeks to a month later now, culminating last night, we got to the end of special session, number two. Somewhat remarkably, I think, they got a resolution, at least a short-term resolution, on police reform, but the issue that's been holding up bonding, and I don't want to say a partisan divide because it's really a legislative division between House and Senate. The Senate, of course, is controlled by the Republicans, the House is controlled by the Democrats, and in a unique twist, to pass a bonding bill with 60%, each majority in each House needs to get six votes from the other minority party. It's very clear that the votes are there to pass a bond- It's very clear that the votes are there to pass a bonding bill in the Senate, but under the rules, the bonding bill has to pass through the House first, which has maximized the position of Leader Douth and the issue that he's brought to the forefront, that so far his caucus is backing him up on, which is some sort of a diminishing of the governor's executive authority in exchange for a vote on the bonding bill. That if you listen to the speeches, which we've all been forced to do, just about every single House member, Republicans included, want to tell you how much they want to vote for this bonding bill but for. And so that's where we're sitting. So let me just work towards a conclusion by giving you where the differences are and how these differences have been bridged between the Republican Senate and the Democratic House on key MICA transportation issues that we've all talked about for a long time. This issue of the local road wetland mitigation, which is the key to guaranteeing the spring construction season amongst other things, there was quite a big gap to begin with. Both sides, both Houses were willing to put in substantial bonding money. The House started at $15 million, the Senate started at $18, but the House also had $8 million in cash upfront, which is what's needed to take care of the shortfall that's there now. As we've gone through these three progressions, where we were sitting last night was an agreement at $15 million in bonding and $8 million in cash. So the Senate moved quite a bit in terms of cash, and that would solve that problem. Then we go to the next big one, local road improvement program, you know, your county local roads around the state, where the MICA position was $112 million. The governor's recommendation was $112 million. And where we started from was the House at 53.2, with about $80 million in local projects. Senate about the same. They've now moved to identical positions, 53.25, 225 million, and about 30 to 35 million in a variety of local projects. So that would be a good package. And we go to the third priority, the local bridges, where again, our recommendation was something over $100 million, which was the governor's recommendation. And almost from the beginning, the House and the Senate have been relatively close on this. The the House started at 53.2 million, plus $50 million for the Kellogg Avenue Bridge, which is one of the huge bridges that crosses the Mississippi River, has statewide impact. The Senate started smaller. They had 25 million in statewide bridge funding, but they also had 50 million for the Kellogg Avenue Bridge. And in the end, now, as of last night, they've linked it up, and they've got 53.2 million statewide for local bridges, which would be significant, and $55 million to do the Kellogg Avenue Bridge. And on it goes. We've got township roads now that have come together at $8 million statewide. We've got statewide state routes to schools at $3 million. We've got significant investment in ports around the state at $14 million. Minnesota rail improvements at $4 million. Railroad warning signal replacements at about $3 million. We've got some significant greater Minnesota airport development, 5.8 million in the Brainerd Lakes, 11.4 million in Rochester. We've got $10 million now. The Senate went all the way from $2 million up to the House's position of $10 million for greater Minnesota transit. And we've got money for the Transportation Economic Development, the TED program, which is only eligible for greater Minnesota counties at just under $3 million. So, you know, by any definition, compared to the last decade, decade and a half, if we could simply get from the over 50% vote that we've had in both Houses to the 60% we need, we would have a transportation bonding bill that we'd all feel pretty darned good about. So that's where we're sitting. It has not passed, but not because they can't get a deal on bonding. They basically, well, they have one. They just can't get it out of the House. This is a situation where one of the four leaders has got a position, and he's put it up against the bonding bill. It's an apple-orange situation. So far, there's been no way to find movement on it, and that's the reason now why you don't have a bonding bill. Because the other reason that developed in Special Session One has at least temporarily been resolved, which is the police reform. So that's where we sit. In terms of transportation policy issues, there haven't been many, because going back to COVID-19 in March, when that all began, they struck a deal that they wouldn't move policy bills unless they had approval from all four caucus leaders, which, as we've seen, is hard to get. There has been some movement in things like replacing certain types of license plates, certain fees, enhanced driver's licenses. The most significant bill that passed passed just before COVID-19, which was back on March 17. And that was an agreement to take the Niclet to New Ulm Trunk Highway 14 funding issue, that part of that massive project down there that's been around for decades, and allow it to be put into competition at a for a particular federal loan program where frankly the the skids have been greased, and that's going to get solved. And that takes a lot of money off the sheets for other competing Minnesota state highways. So that was a strong bipartisan vote and a real help to everyone. Of all the talk about COVID-19 money, all the trillions of dollars that have been spent, so far, there's been no money spent on transportation infrastructure. So in that light, just so you know, at this moment in time, there's a $1.5 trillion federal infrastructure bill that has a lot of transportation money in it that has moved out of the federal House, but at this point is not moving in the Senate. On the other hand, the U.S. Secretary of Transportation, Elaine Chao, Trump's secretary, has previously, about a month ago, announced a $906 million investment to revitalize America's infrastructure, which does have some transportation money in, some of which would come to Minnesota. So just so you know, those things are out there. They are in play. And that's kind of where we sit. The final thing I want to say, and I think he's still here, Chris, I don't need to tell you, and we all saw the presentation this morning, but Chris, your county engineer, has been tremendous, an invaluable member of our group at MICA. He's an active participant, and of course, he's a statewide leader with the state engineers, and his input has really been invaluable to us. And so he's great, and you already know that, but I want to do affirm it from our point of view, and we appreciate the interaction. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any question? Matt, you gonna?
Yeah, I'll do a quick wrap up.
Quick wrap up and yeah.
Yeah. Carly Stark.
He's got to get going.
Yeah, Carly Stark does public safety corrections work with us. I'm going to just really breeze through this slide. I know other disasters happen that can cause you concerns at times, natural disasters. And so the disaster contingency account, which is where local matches are paid for from when natural disasters happen, was flat out of money. The legislature put some money in there. That's a good news thing should a disaster come along. But really, the big news is, I'll leave you to read this slide. We were also really pushing for some additional money for County Committee Corrections Act and County Probation Officer funding that had been getting blanked for almost the last decade, about a 1% increase. Well, we've been doing double-digit percent increases in the state institutional correction institution budgets. And that had broad bipartisan support, but just didn't didn't happen as part of a supplemental bill. There is some DOC contract language that passed that was, I think, really good news for counties in the sense that if the state correctional system is to release more inmates or to release them early as a result of the COVID situation or other situations, and look for them to look for inmates to be housed in county prisons for a short period of time, that they have to negotiate the terms of that arrangement with the counties. So the state's not setting the per diem rate. You have to agree to that with with the state. So leaving you with the bad news and then running out the door. The state of Minnesota, Minnesota Management and Budget, the state's finance agency in May, early May, issued a revised budget projections and first to the to the February forecast. First thing I want to say is, that's the first time that the state finance agency has revised its forecast estimates, if you will, in about 40 or 50 years of modern forecasting. It's just not something that's done. We forecast in November and February, and that's generally what we live with. But this situation has been so dramatic and so dynamic that there was an expectation, I think, on the part of everybody, the governor, the legislature, the public, to get a sense of, and of course, the economic forecast for GDP among economists, by the time the February forecast came out, was already changing rapidly with the COVID situation. So we went, in effect, what summarized on this chart. This is the summary of where the state budget currently stands. We started in February with a proposed positive balance of $1.5 billion. The legislature spent about $550 million. And then the May 5 budget revisions expected that revenues would be $3.6 billion lower in the state general fund than what they had previously predicted back in February. And that spending would be about $160 million lower as well, so that was a positive aspect. But summing all of that up, we went from a $1.5 billion proposed positive balance for the remainder of the 2021 biennium in state government to a $2.4 billion deficit. And so the things that have happened, and of course, nothing happened here in the second special session, so there's been a really intense focus on not making the situation any worse. And so we currently stand at about that same part, place, $2.4 billion deficit. The one thing I really want to point out here in the tails, when the legislature comes back in calendar 2021 in January here, what they'll actually be setting is a state budget for the 2022, 23 biennium. And so Minnesota projects out to a three-year window, and the projection that was put out in February for an $824 million balance in the out years, not including inflation. If you would include inflation, it would have been about a $300, $297 million deficit. That was not revisited in the May 5 changes. So if you anticipate, if you take on face value that there that there was a $4 billion swing just for 2021, they didn't look at 22, 23. So that's what they'll be setting the budget for. So I used to do a little budget work earlier in my life. I'm not going to give you a number, but it's going to be bad. It's going to be significant. The good news is that the I think sales tax revenues have been dropping off a little bit less, income tax revenues a little bit less. I assume that that has, my thought is that that has something to do with the federal stimulus that's been being out there. Folks still have some money, but that is probably going to start petering out here also as the higher unemployment rate and business closures take root. The state has a healthy general fund budget reserve, about $2.4 billion. That's all one time, however. So, you know, they could, the state could manage the current biennium and find a way to balance that. But when we get to setting the next biennial budget, which is where there's the potential of cost impacts on counties and others, if there's significant budget cuts, that's where we have to be concerned. And then finally, that that was all about the state general fund. And of course, we're also watching closely, a lot of talk about transportation in your meeting today and in our presentation. This just shows you some of the non-general state funds. Moving over to the second column from the right, these were the estimated revenue changes in those May 5 projections for things like the Transit Assistance Fund, which is where both Metro Transit and Greater Minnesota gets operating money. Those revenues were down about $117 million estimated. The four constitutionally dedicated funds from the Legacy Act, the Parks and Trails, Arts and Cultural Heritage, Outshore Heritage, Clean Water, which is where sometimes local governments get some grants from, those all had projected shortages. And all of the funding streams for the Highway Tax User Distribution Fund, which is both where CASA money, municipal state aid, and of course, the trunk highway money comes from an expectation that those revenues will be down also. So we'll see how it pans out over the next few months, but probably a bleak picture around around the horn when it comes to setting the budget. Happy to answer any questions.
I just have one here. There's going to be, obviously, there's going to be another special session because you asked to call it in order to extend that emergency. But are the leaders, both House, Senate, and all the powers that be, are they meeting behind the scenes now and to get a bonding bill done in the next one?
So my, so the tweets so far this morning are not optimistic. And sort of, so that's the the first response. The the indications sort of coming out now is that the realization that with each month, this gets harder to do. And the reason it does is because politics and the upcoming elections in in November, the closer we get, folks start using the bonding bill against each other, and the fact that it didn't pass and who voted for what. And so I frankly would say that it's, you know, we're going to keep pushing for it.
Yeah, I would.
But I think it's it's probably this was the last best chance, I think, and it may happen, but if I'm a gambler, I wouldn't start putting a lot of money on it. But I but I it'll be it'll be discussed. And if it happens in August, that'd be good luck.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else got any questions? That was, I wanted to get that one in there first. Okay. Yeah, we're running a little behind here today, too, so we had another group here after that.
Sorry for taking up so much time. Thank you again for your membership. Appreciate it and look forward to seeing you again soon.
Okay, well, thank you for that comprehensive report. Yep, it's not good news. Thank you. All right, Jerry. Monty, you want to come up with your annual report?
Jerry, you want to say it?
I can hand, if you have something to hand out, I can hand it up for you, Jerry.
Totally paperless.
Wow, Jerry. That's great.
Thank you, Monty and Commissioners. The paper was put in the board meeting packets, I hope. Okay, good. Well, I guess I'm here with a glass half full after hearing all that depressing news about budgets. I'm here to talk about the Benton SWCD annual report. And, you know, it's been a while since I've been at this podium. And usually, we don't do our annual report in July to look at the previous year, but first it was my health, and I really wanted to be here. It was a little bit difficult getting around earlier, being on crutches and whatnot. And then COVID hit, of course, so just decided to wait a couple more months. So I hope that was, you were okay with that. And and I feel like it's worthwhile for me to come present and answer questions in person. So the format of our annual reports, different than it has been in past years. You probably noticed a lot of articles that were written by others, and we just thought they were, they had a lot of good articles that were written in the last year. And sometimes it's kind of nice to get somebody else's perspective on on things. So we thought it would be nice to revisit some of those things. I'm not going to go through most of those articles, and you're also not going to hear me talk a lot about feedlots and the erosion control BMPs and a lot of those things that I usually talk about. A little bit different flavor this year. I'm going to start on page six. So if you've got your annual report in front of you, page six, there's a, there's those charts. And the one on the the right, financial contribution for conservation projects. I know I've been coming here for about five or six years straight, something like that, saying we surpassed last year in conservation. It's when you look at it from a dollars perspective. And 2019 was a big year for Benton County. Just shy of $3.5 million in conservation work that the Soil and Water District was involved with. So pretty proud, pretty proud of that. If you flip over to the next page, page seven, the third section down there, kind of splits that up into four different categories. And the third line down there, $931,755 was that up into four different categories, and the third line down there, $931,755 was a result of landowner contributions. And that's probably what I'm most proud of. This annual report is put together by the Soil and Water Conservation District, but if you think of it, that's a, that's just south of $1 million that our landowners kept in Benton County just to do conservation work. There's some soil and water districts that I would say would have a hard time saying that $1 million was spent in their district. And so, the measure of our success of our programs, one way to look at it is the dollars that are spent, because those generate conservation projects, so we're, we're pretty proud of that. And then, as you know, last year was the drawdown, and what I don't have displayed here is the countless hours that the community put into that drawdown project that you saw on our tour last year. Just hundreds and hundreds of hours of time doing fundraising and all those different things that it took to, for that project to come together, so. A little bit different twist, I, I just felt like the county board would want to hear from NRCS maybe this year, and I did bring Pat Gilling along with me to say a few words about the partnership that we have between the Soil and Water Conservation District and NRCS, and really what it takes and why we're so successful in bringing a lot of those federal dollars in. So, with your permission, I'd like to give Pat about five minutes here. And I should mention, happy to take questions along the way, so.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Jerry, and thank you to the commissioners for the time today. Like Jerry mentioned, I just want to touch base a little bit on the Environmental Quality Incentive Program. EQUIP is our acronym. Basically, EQUIP is the federal cost share program that we do most of our projects with. It'd be feedlot projects, we're looking at manure storage, erosion control projects. We offer incentive payments for things like no-till and cover crops. So, there's a wide array of things that we do with the EQUIP program. But it is a federal program administered by NRCS, the Natural Resources Conservation Service. To start, I just want to touch base a little bit, too, on staffing levels with NRCS. A couple of years ago, we were here and kind of went through a little bit how staffing levels were looking at being cut, and that has happened. In Benton County, we've gone from two to one and a half to one staff, NRCS staff. I say that, we do have an engineering technician who's housed in Benton County, but serves multi-counties and just focuses on engineering. So, as far as planning staff and contracting staff with NRCS, you're looking at it, one person. And just to put that in comparison, I want to show some numbers between Benton, Millelacs, and Sherburne Counties, because NRCS staffing levels are very similar in all three counties. Back in 2018, the state of Minnesota came out with some EQUIP numbers, statewide numbers, showing how many dollars were being brought into each county for a five-year period, 2013 to 2017. Those numbers are, Benton County had 124 contracts during that five-year period for That dollar amount was the second highest amount in the state for that five-year period, and the number of contracts was the seventh highest for the state. In comparison to Sherburne County, was 45 contracts for $508,000, and Millelacs was 38 contracts for $265,000. So, again, 124, 45, 38, 3.3 million, 500,000, 265,000. I'd like to take credit for that and say, "I'm the reason." I can't do that. Truly, it's because of the Soil and Water District. And those numbers have continued. In 2019, actually, the numbers have gone up since 2017. So, last year, we had 24 contracts for $1.476,000. That's just the federal funds from EQUIP that came in. And in 2020, we're just wrapping up our contracts now, but it looks like we're going to have 15 contracts for about $1.3 million. So, our personal goal is always to exceed that $1 million, and we've been able to keep that above that for the last, I think, five or six years. So, why the difference? Truly, it's because we have an active Soil and Water Conservation District that works side-by-side, we're housed in the same office, you know, in a direct partnership with NRCS. Without the district, we couldn't do that. We wouldn't be bringing in these dollars. And the other piece of it is, the district has always been very active in trying to go out and get additional dollars, state funds, private funds. And typically, we're piggybacking our EQUIP dollars with their dollars, which makes the projects more affordable to farmers, and that's why they're able to do them. EQUIP alone might not cover enough to make it affordable. So, all that being said, you know, I want to thank the district for their support for NRCS programs, and thank the board for their support of the district. So, thank you.
I was hoping maybe they had a couple of questions to stump you, but we'll work on that for next year. I'm actually going to skip and move forward all the way to page 14. There's an article in there. Written by the Benton County News. Last year, we had a lot of construction going on, a lot of things going on, and the talk from January 1st through December 31st was the drawdown project. But we had another big project going on in St. Cloud, and I think the picture there that's in the article kind of shows all the concrete box coverts that were put in the city of St. Cloud. So, that's kind of a project, for some reason, it flies under the radar, I think, a little bit. I mean, the whole Northeast St. Cloud initiative. And, you know, we've done some outreach, but I think it, citizens in large probably aren't real familiar with that project. It's nice in that we have a plan for Northeast St. Cloud, the number of projects, the locations, and we've been able to get funding for that, and we're about halfway through with our, with progress. So, that's kind of nice to, nice to see, and 2019 was a big step with getting that underground regional treatment system in place. I'm going to go forward to page 24. Again, I'm skipping a lot of the best management practices that you guys have seen on the tour. With 24, I get asked quite often, and over and over years, is the water getting any better? Is it getting any cleaner? And I don't dodge the topic, but I always, I've always taken sort of the perspective of, I believe it's getting cleaner, but we don't have the data to show it. And, you know, I'm happy with, that the Little Rock Lake Association continues to collect water sampling, water samples on Little Rock Lake. And I'm happy to point out in that top article, sort of the last sentence in there, it says basically, we have an 80% to 90% confidence that those graphs at the bottom are showing us the real picture of what's happening in that lake. So, statistically, we can say it's, the water is getting clearer. That's the secadisc graph that you see there. Increasing trend mean it's getting clearer, and so that's a good indication of improving water quality. And the bottom one there is total phosphorus concentrations. Again, statistically-supported data can tell us that the phosphorus is getting down, and I'm glad we sort of hit that threshold in 2019, because now we have the drawdown, and it was such a big project. It's nice that we could hit that statistically significant dataset there, so. If people ask you, yes, the water is getting better in Little Rock Lake. We're proud of that. I think I told you last year or the year before, we had the data for the Elk River watershed, and so now we have it for Little Rock Lake itself. Just a quick look ahead to 2020. The Soccer Rapids Sportsman's Club's been really kind to us and providing us some funding to do some monitoring on the streams going into Little Rock Lake. We won't have, we'll only have about four years' worth of data, so we won't have a robust dataset that will give us the statistics to back things up. But I think next year, when I do my annual report, I'll be able to give you some good solid glimpses as to what's happening with our stream, stream data. So, that's just kind of a look ahead to next year. If I move ahead to page 26, of course, we had the drawdown project. You guys are all familiar with it. It was a great, great project. It turned out very well. The question that we get, "Did it work?" And a lot of people have voiced their opinion on whether or not the drawdown was successful or not. And I think it was very successful myself. And it was a big project. It was sort of one of those unique projects where there was a lot of, a lot of citizens involved and a lot of work in getting the community working together. Of course, there was Eagle Creek Renewable Energy, a private partner there, and about three or four different state agencies involved, along with the Soil and Water Conservation District. So, I think it was just a success in outreach and getting the community to work together. You saw that kind of gray section on the left-hand side there, kind of tries to talk about whether or not it worked or not, and I think the, it's going to take us a couple of years, again, of data to really show that it worked, but I know about three weeks ago, I stopped on the north side of the lake at Benton Beach, just to take a look at the water. The Lake Association's blog, that people were saying there was, you know, significant algae bloom coming. And 2020 was one of those years where if you're going to see algae, it's, the ingredients were there. It was hot, and it was sunny really early in the year, and the water temperatures rose quickly. We had a lot of sunlight. So, when I went out there, the lake was turning green with algae. But what I've noticed is, it was the type of algae that stays suspended in the water. It wasn't that floating stuff that we saw for many years, you know, around 2005, 6, 7, and that's kind of what you probably would normally suspect. So, I looked up at it, and I said, "Yeah, the water's turning green, but it's a different type of algae. The lake community is definitely changing." So, again, we'll, we'll wait to draw, you know, real complete conclusions, but I'm feeling pretty good about what we're seeing out there. So, the plants are doing great, and Eric Alton will be giving me a tour some Friday night here over the next couple of weeks. I'm really interested in seeing the Mississippi River and what's happening out there as well, so. And I'm just about done. I'm going to ask you to look at the very back page. This was a reformatting piece to our annual report. We had requests for sort of a table of contents, but a little bit of direction on what are the goals of, of the office and conservation goals for the county, and how do we find that within the annual report? So, this is an attempt to be able to give you just a real quick look, where's the Little Rock Lake stuff? What are we trying to accomplish in Little Rock Lake? So, since I mentioned that, you know, we do have some of the data sitting right there. About a 35% reduction there, and you can read all the numbers, and if you want more information, it kind of tells you what page, page to go to, so. Ran out of room, but St. Cloud, of course, has its own set of goals and measurables as well. Like I mentioned, we're about halfway done there, so. With that, I'll answer any questions that you have, and then one more comment for you.
Okay. Anyone got any questions?
I don't have any questions. I got a comment on the $931,000 that was spent by local landowners. That doesn't happen without the quality of staff and the people that work there when they come out. You know, you could have somebody show up, and if you don't like what they say, or like what they do, or how they act, you know, this, that, 900, and the word gets out. And I think our SWCD and Pat have, not only the farming community, they looked at, you know, Lake Association, river owners and everything. They've combined everything to make this work to that advantage, I think.
Including East St. Cloud and stuff, too. I think they did a great job the last few years. I got it.
Thank you for the comments. That's appreciated.
And then, yeah, all that money that's contractors, that stays in the county. That's the big thing.
A lot of it does. Yeah. And if you can keep locals spending their money in Benton County, nothing wrong with vacationing in northern Minnesota. I do that, too, but from a financial perspective, yeah, that's, that's money that could easily be spent elsewhere, so. And then the, I'm sorry, did I interrupt? Okay. The one comment was, we had our One Water, One Plan meeting last week. You guys were all there, and I thought it was a really successful meeting. Amanda is setting up the, the second meeting with Sherburne County and the Sherburne SWCD, and so I'm not sure if you had planned on discussing that today or during committee concerns, but.
Not today.
But it, let me rephrase. I was hopeful that you would discuss or decide who would be the commissioner representative on that. We have a tentative date scheduled, August 18th. I think that's a Tuesday. It should be a date of County Commissioner Board Meeting, and also one in Sherburne County. So, they're, they were suggesting we could do it on the 18th after their board meeting, about 11:30. Just pencil that in, because we haven't connected up with the Sherburne SWCD, but if you could pick her.
Yeah, we'll take care of that at our next meeting.
Yeah, we got an August 4th meeting.
Yeah, we got a meeting before that date, so we'll take care of the point.
Okay. So, yeah, any other questions? And was the report okay this year with the changes? You liked it?
Very good.
Yeah?
Lot of work.
Yeah, it is a lot of work. There's a lot of work getting done. I tell you what, I'm proud of our citizens and, and the staff, too. You know, things are clicking right now. We're getting a lot done, so. All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank Pat.
Jake, you got to go.
Okay. We're going to make one committee of the whole. Do you want to, can we make a committee of the whole meeting first? Yeah, as long as you're here, Jake.
Sure.
Maybe we'll take a little out of order here. We'll do a committee of the whole meeting, Monty.
New ones? Just the one we talked about earlier, one on the airport authority. So, sometime the week of, next week.
Yeah, you want to do that next week?
Sure.
Yeah, we can do it right away.
What works for you all next week?
28th.
Yeah, do it in the morning on the 28th. I got doctor in the afternoon.
You know, I, I see on my calendar here, there's a Water Resource Advisory Committee meeting, the 28th in the morning.
And I don't know. I haven't heard anything, Monty.
Well, I was, I know I was asked by Amanda to schedule it and set up a go-to meeting for it on that date, that morning.
About the 30th, then.
I won't be here the 30th.
Okay.
The rest of the week, I mean, I'm going to be gone in the, yeah. So, I see they'll be Monday or Tuesday or.
That, that, our WRC meeting must start at 10:00, somewhere in there.
Right, we could, we could do it at 9:00.
You have not heard about it.
We could do it at 8:30 or 9:00.
8:30. 8:30. So, just start really early on the 28th.
8:30.
8:30?
Yeah.
Okay. 8:30 and the 10. You know, I was thinking, Ms. Chair, I might, might have a little more new information on CARES funding, so I'd like to tack that onto the agenda.
Yeah, I was going to ask you, you put that in with.
Yeah, you know, I've received some external requests for funding, and I just wanted to make sure I share that with you all. So, talk about CARES, too. So, 8:30 on the 28th.
Very good.
That is all.
Want to accept the CARE calls.
That is all we have.
Okay. All the people saying aye.
You know, I'll reconfirm that there's a WRC.
I didn't, I wasn't notified yet, so I don't know.
We'll contact Amanda, we'll let you know, yeah.
Okay. We've got the commissioner meeting updates, everybody.
The only ones I had, well, we had the public hearing.
Okay, you're covered.
Yep.
And, well, and I had Mike on, and that was pretty well covered, yeah.
They got everything covered on that.
And, and, yeah, that's, Executive Committee on the Council on Aging adopted a $2.75 million budget. It's a 2.25% decrease, and that was interesting. I got a, we had some other discussions, but I can bring them up some other time, you know.
Yeah, the only thing I had is, we had a library executive committee to discuss some private issues that will come forth later.
Yeah, and we did have a criminal Yeah, and we did have a criminal justice meeting also. And there's no sentence to serve, no. There's, there would only be two under and out that would be eligible. There's three females total in jail. I think we have a total of thirty-one people in jail in the, at that report, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, so. Let's see, what else? Oh, yeah, jury trials. They'll be, they had to submit a plan for approval in July, so they can start those back up again. Yeah, they're going to try and start up some domestic abuse programs again, but they can only have ten in a group, and they already got five, more than that wanting to sign up, so. Other than that, I think that's about all I have. Anybody else? Okay. Any concerns? We had a committee of the whole, we did those. This time, I don't know if the business has gone before the board, or most adjournments would be in order.
So move, Mr. Chair.
All those favors signify by saying aye. Aye. Most, most caring.